And thank you. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our April 4th, 2023 city council meeting. Here, Mary, follow our ways. Councilor Barry here.
Yeah.
Councilor Beasley.
Yeah.
Councilor King, here. Councilor Wreck, here. Mayor Short, here. Councilor Sovereign, here. And Councilor Watts, here. We do have one addition to this evening's agenda. John is here from Bayside Chapel, if we could add that to the agenda later this evening. We have a consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review everything?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to exempt two items. January 3rd, state council's special meeting minutes. That's item number three. And item number eight, accounts paid.
Do you have a question?
I do. On January 3rd minutes of the special meeting, it indicates that R. Beasley and B. Sovereign were absent from the meeting. In fact, I was in the audience, but we were not sworn in until, or at least I was not sworn in, until the regular meeting. So that would actually ruin our perfect record of attendance if that were to be found to be so.
I can double check this, but I think if you're not sworn in, you're not considered a council member at that time. So it won't ruin your perfect record because your first meeting of the year was January 8th. It was very good.
Good, because I am ruining for a record.
Do you not want your record ruined?
And on number eight, accounts paid, well, I have a question for the city reporter on this. I have a financial relationship with the News Times. They are a client of Beacon Media, which I am the president. And I don't know if I should declare a potential conflict of interest or just accuse myself briefly.
Or the review and approval of the accounts paid?
The accounts paid.
Yeah, that's not the type of conflict you would have.
Okay.
So you're okay, but thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Yes, back on January 3rd, I noticed that it was dated January 1st.
Corrected that, okay.
Yes, the mayor of Congress is having today, I don't know why I'm there.
This is okay.
I wondered why I had hangovers. Explains already that.
Any other corrections or additions?
And pardon me, Councilor, so during the consent agenda, you can ask questions. You don't really have to pull an item unless you wanted to discuss it and deliberate on it next later? So in this case, you're asking a question, we're getting any answers. So did you still want to pull them and discuss them later?
No, not at all, I just wanted to discuss them. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda with the few corrections and glitches. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. We've got our commission and committee reports. Emergencies preparedness, do you have a report this evening?
We have our next meeting on the 10th.
Okay.
At four thirty. And we're going to be looking at budget practices.
Okay. All right.
And the only other thing that I can add, our newest member, Deb, I think her name is, well, Freiber. I talked to her, she's not going to be able to attend the meeting, but she'll be in from North Carolina. But she has lived through hurricanes, she's lived in Florida. And she said that she has a lot of experience with what happens after the disaster happens. I think she'll be really good at that to our committee.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Karen and Draca and I have the honor of attending the emergency planners meeting in Sun River a couple of weeks ago, and that was really helpful. And so I'll be bringing some notes and help with that as well. Anything else from emergency? Harbor Restoration Steering, I don't think we've had anything from Steering to report on that. The Houseless Committee met and we are actually working on a couple of things. Number one is the, we are putting together something that will define houselessness in People Bay and also in ordinance limiting where we're going to be camping and providing camping in town and where it's going to be camping. So that will be coming to you in very near future, look forward to that. Anything from Harbor?
That's the only thing we have, it's sort of coming as a tentative thing. We'll wait and see what happens, but hopefully the 15th tax day, we get our new dock there for the motorhome.
Oh, actually, there's news on that, we get that on Thursday.
Oh, my bad.
It's going to be delivered.
Hopefully. Delivered and installed.
And installed, that's updated too. We have a lot of dates, things keep happening.
Well, hopefully we'll have the docks in by Friday.
Yep. Wow.
Ain't no more than you.
Me too. I just know it was coming on Thursday.
I'll, I'll.
We're sending them around.
Perfect, okay. Hi, Julie, did you have anything this evening?
Not anything beyond what's in the packets, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Okay. Sound an enhancement? See Dennis is there, do you have a report this evening, Dennis?
We met yesterday.
Yeah, do you want to?
We have a new perspective member.
Oh, wonderful.
And we talked about t-shirts.
Pardon me, Dennis.
Pardon?
Could you please come up front? Part of that is so we get you on recording.
Right.
You mean I'm not loud enough as it is?
Nope. Guess I'm not.
Oh.
And I already know.
All four go signing, my hands don't work. At any rate, we have a meeting set up for the 26th of June prior to the thin clipping on the 15th of July. And we have t-shirts that will be available designed by the neighbors for kids.
They're huge. That's awesome.
Thank you for People Bay. That's it, I wish Beatty was here, he had more to say.
That's a good story. Thank you.
I have something on the committee, I was, I sat through, I've been sitting through all the commission meetings the past couple of weeks to educate, so. They are really becoming a good solid event. Yeah, there's a whole table full of them and lots of great ideas, and thank you so much for coming.
Excellent. All righty. Okay, going right to our introduction of our Lincoln Valley Sheriff. Come on up, gentlemen.
Come for it. Hello.
Go ahead, Casey, go ahead and introduce yourself, our new deputy sheriff.
Deputy Casey Elfstrom. Always liked to know about me. Group in the area, credit from past. I was in the Navy for seven years and then went to Oregon State, graduated degrees of psychology, New York Miami Development, went to Sheriff's Office for kind of like three years now already, which is kind of wise. When this contract came up, I expressed a whole lot of interest in it because this is the area I really enjoy working in because it's very familiar, I know a lot of the faces around here, so just very happy to be here.
Happy to have you. Are there any questions for Casey and you, Sheriff?
I can introduce myself, I'm Nick Dale, I'm the patrol sergeant in the Sheriff's Office, coming up on eight years. Got a long history of total service, but suffice to say, I'm happy to be here. I'm going to be Casey's support and the primary connection between you.
There he is, right there.
There he is, right there. But the primary relationship between you, between the city and the Sheriff's Office, obviously Casey is your day-to-day guy, if you need calls for service, you need us to show up at a certain place, certain time, he's more than available. If we need backup, I'm there for any of the administrative stuff. And then Lieutenant Berger is committed to this contract as well, so we're excited to have this in place. It's an awesome change for us and an evolution from the overtime contract we had before, because it'll be much more stable.
I have a question here.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Will the deputy be responsible for enforcing any city laws or is it just state laws that we're going to be looking at?
He will be helping Brady with some of the ordinancees.
Yeah.
For the same things, for enforcement.
Could I ask at this time that we, perhaps on the next agenda, if people will approve of this, that we have a discussion on the municipal court? There are charters, you know, allows us to establish a municipal court and appoint a municipal judge. And this is going to be an expensive experience, or not an expensive regime with a, with our own police or our own sheriff's department. This could be one method of recruiting some of those costs.
Absolutely, but that would be a workshop agenda type of thing.
Do you think that's something we could look at?
I, I'm asking the council for a work session this month, so certainly we did that as a discussion.
Thank you.
Including our current policy of complaint-driven only versus addressing it by missing things. We have some staff who are there, they would like you to turn around and wave at them. Thank you very much, I know that's great, but. Carla, Tiffany, I don't see Diane, I know that hit restoring us.
Okay.
Can you try for us?
I think Casey's.
We're also excited to be here.
It's good. Diane went ahead and went on camera. It'd be wonderful if you could come in at your convenience, meet everyone.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is the best way to reach you, just 911?
I do have the cell phone. Sometimes it's either way, does it hold on or something like that? Batting's on here.
Okay. I think one of the things we should discuss during the work session is how we are going to communicate with our.
Yeah, process around that, otherwise we don't want everybody calling for different issues, so. So it's a good issue to have that.
Definitely something we can work to find a comfortable arm to, so that the guys have a chance to put voice in.
Do y'all have a list of priorities for what you're working on, Beth, or?
Free flowing for myself.
We have not, no, had that especially yet. May Day.
Three?
Three.
Besides my list that I already did.
I saw you on the side of the, what I was going to do from Newport two days ago, and I was doing the speak limit. We're all happy to just see you up there.
Presence is a big part of the job, especially in a place like People Bay, being somewhat invisible.
Yes.
Biggest insurance to the simple things like speaking, but also to any of the other.
What's she really doing?
She's bored, I'll start being her.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm downtown getting my coffee at 8:17 in the morning, and that is ridiculous, the people that speak through down there.
And that's where I've been, so far just showing my.
I'm just like, please, please be a presence there, because it's, I can't believe, I'm sitting there and I'm just like, you know, just out when I'm standing in the road.
Even with the overtime contractors, I'm in their favorite places to sit, yeah, right there.
Don't you want to always be there?
Yes.
And, yeah, it's just about us.
That and the crosswalks.
Yes, the crosswalks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Leanna, so Leanna, is Leanna on the line? Okay. She was going to talk to us about a cyber phone ban.
Oh, I heard, but you're in the little right up there?
No, no. I don't have any done with that.
I talked to her Monday and another week, and they weren't set to come in.
Oh.
That wasn't Monday, it's Friday.
They, they were provided the agenda. And I'm. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Should we release these deputies to go arrest somebody?
Sure, if you want to, yeah, absolutely. I think they're welcome to stay, but they can also leave, right?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
We'll see, we'll just learn what we can.
Nice. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have public comments. Is there anybody with public comments, Casey? Yes, Krista.
Need a sign in?
Oh. Don't have to, but. I just wanted to thank all of you for getting these gentlemen back in. We used to have Curtis, that was about 20 years ago, but what a difference he made. And I know these gentlemen will do the same, we needed, it's welcome by everyone. It helps every single person in the community, plus our visitors. And I mentioned crosswalks. Autumn laughed that I should be employed writing down about the crosswalk people, because, I mean, we've all seen it, it's very scary.
Can you sign in?
Oh, thank you, thank you. And other than that, guys are just doing a great job, it's going to be a good summer.
Thank you, Krista. Any other public comments this evening? Okay. And finished business, 50th anniversary celebration, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll give this report. I'll be happy to. So yesterday, Mayor Short, Kim Brady and I met to just try to finalize some of the things that we were working on. And we decided that we really, we have a lot done, and we're looking to just simplify a lot of things with this particular event. So the food trucks have been set with two, and I've been communicating with Autumn about this. We have Sisquamie and Roseon, and so we thought it's going to be just fine to have two. They can come up with the number, I think of meals that we might need. And I'm just going to be in contact with them to make sure that, like, right before the event, that we have a good feel as to how many are coming. And so we've got them, and one specializes in fish, the other specializes in smoked meats and barbecue, so I think it'll be a good balance. I did investigate to see if the tribe had a food truck, they do not. There is a food truck available in Sulets, but it's more along the line of Sisquamie, it's more like fish products and stuff. And so the two that we have are very keen on not having competition with your particular specialty, which I agree with. And we also talked in the last meeting about possibly having Chester's do sandwiches and things like that. And Mayor Short found out that the same day we're having our event is the Chester's Employee Appreciation Day. And so that kind of makes us that, they've also mapped Fire Department, the Coast Guard.
Really?
Yeah, to go to their event, but I think you said that they could possibly come to ours as well, yes, Kim?
We have cake, right? So we have at least one from the sheriff who's interested. One is on his phone.
So anyway, the food trucks, I think, are settled. I, today I had to send another contact to Sisquamie, she couldn't find it, but that's not a big issue. And Brady has been working on picking up staging, stage, entertainment, how many tables we need, how many chairs we need, tents and what have you, so we've got that pretty much in line. We are, changed the thoughts about the Pioneer families. We had talked about possibly having them come up and speak, and having them like on some type of schedule. I think this time we're going to just do it more informally and just tell them to come with a story, or anybody that wants to come with a story about People Bay, they're going to be welcome to do that at the stage. It's going to be in our advertising to bring mementos, write stories. And so what, I think we'll just make it easy on ourselves. Ken is coming up with a program introducing the history of People Bay with pictures and kind of look for.
I apologize, I meant to bring, you've all seen programs, right?
Yeah.
So it's a lot like that, where it will take a historical picture.
Okay, and you're looking to.
I didn't understand what you were talking about.
Like a, like a little program, but only you're going to sell it, aren't you?
Well, right, so you've been, you've seen, you've gone to concerts and plays and things like that. They have programs where you can get, where they usually have the images of people. It's just going to be a picture display of this history of People Bay. And I meant to, I'll send you, I'll send you an email with the, I meant to print that and show it to you, so I didn't get it.
Okay, but you, but you must be selling stuff with.
If we can, I mean, I think if we do it right, it'll be a friendly word.
It's high quality.
Yeah, because I, I mean, it's got a lot of our wonderful images in there.
Right. Are we still doing the slideshow?
Yes.
Yeah, we're still doing that, yeah. And we have a special photographer that we're going to have that. And Kathy, of course, will be the mistress of ceremonies, and will introduce Chief, Chief DeCo, and who will speak to us. Valerie will post on, I hope you know this, on Facebook. And Kim will post on the city's website. And Valerie, I know this is from a, you'll volunteer to take the volunteer call. And so that's really nice for you to do that, thank you. And so the pictures will be just waiting to, because DeCo, we're thinking about just keeping, just using the pictures that we already have. And maybe have about 50. And Kim, you mentioned some type of process for these photographs to make them more sturdy, do I understand that correctly?
Well, it depends on how we want to display them. If we just want to put images up, there's this thing called mix panels where you can just, we live, put images. So we could get the images on these, and then after they're displayed during the celebration, we can actually put them in here and display them and say it all, which would be fun to have a lot of these historical images around here. You know, maybe just right, right down the wall inside there. So we have some of those, and then we have the slideshow, so. We have a lot of pictures and some of them will, the quality is not great, so we'll just see what we can get.
And so I still need someone to help figure out the picture movies, would you like to help with that? Would you, we have some time to do that.
Yeah, I already thought I was doing that.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah.
We need you to take out the pictures.
Just if you could do that, that would be terrific, thank you. And just say, so I do need some city councilors to volunteer to cut and pass out cake at the city table, or the take table, okay. That is a. Okay.
I don't want to be far from the cake.
Yeah, all right.
So I can have served that.
I don't think we're going to have coffee, we decided not to, to do that, but we do need someone to be at the city desk. Could you do that? So we also are going to set up some of this on Friday, where we're going to have the parathas delivered, and some of the tents will be up, things of that nature. So we're looking for someone that, either you have a friend or know someone that has a friend that we could trust to just sit down or stay at the park overnight to, just to make sure that there's no vandalism or anything like that, maybe someone that has a dog with them. So if y'all know.
I'm, I'm not sure about having to volunteer, I think our liability, I think we should be, I didn't know we were going to do that, so we should look at TCBI as some other kind of security service and find out how to. I, I, I might, I have early, so we have this back. Just let me, let me talk to TCBI.
Okay.
Who are, TCBI, I guess, is our security, because I would feel far more comfortable from a library standpoint to have security doing it than volunteer.
Okay, that sounds good. And so then for the t-shirts, we've got three different options for t-shirts. We've got PSI, which is in Tillamook. Pretty much, they're looking at 843 per shirt. 993 for extra large, 1143 extra, extra large. You've got Ideal Printing, which is in Newport. And they're coming in, instead of 843, they're coming at 1010 per shirt. It's pretty much along the lines, you have only about $3 smart expensive for all of the shirts. Now we have Oriental Training out of Omaha, they pretty much do all shirts for either 999 or 1199. So we're looking at really three different options here. My thought, Tillamook is where PSI is located, but it's sort of local, you know? I mean, that's, that seems like a fairly good price. If we went to the one in Newport, it would be quite a bit more expensive, so it's really up to the council as to what you would like. I think surely we could get a better price with Oriental Training, but that's a non-honest, a national firm. And I'm thinking we want to go with someone more local, so we can pay a little bit more and give the business to Newport. Or we can go to this other country, Tillamook, so what would the pressure possibly be?
I wonder if we could ask Ideal, Ideal, if they would match that.
So I can ask. I can ask, ask, ask that, so if, if they will not, what was, what would you want to do?
Go to Tillamook.
Okay. Okay.
How many, how many shirts are we thinking of purchasing?
Well, we're looking, you know, it's just been kind of like none.
Right, yeah.
Decided, so I'm thinking maybe 150 shirts.
150?
Or 30 for volunteers, so that leaves us about 120 that we hope we can sell.
And how much should we sell this for?
Well, not really sure, we're looking at, we talked about, I don't think you were in the meeting, but we talked about maybe about 10% for the regular shirt, 12% markup for the larger ones, and 9% for children as far as the markup. Do y'all agree with that, or do you think?
I think they should all be the same price, I don't think we should charge extra for larger sizes.
Okay, is that, do you want to agree with that? Yes. Okay, okay, so this thing, markup. Okay.
Where the shirts all cost whatever, 15 dollars?
Yeah, they're, they're all different, they're all, you know, they're all different.
They do, the, the base cost will be based on size. So children, youth are small, if youth are cheaper, then the adults, and then the extra will also be, there's like a range from, I think, isn't there a range on the paper, like from eight to 12 or something like that? So you would want to say we're going to charge 15 dollars for every, which covers all three prices.
Yes.
Exactly. Okay.
And you know, I don't think we should think of this as a fundraiser. I think this is, you know, so cost plus a little bit more, but really, you know, just, it just should be. You know, breaking.
Exactly.
So on the phone, I wish, much less, yeah.
Just, just trying to help you, that's all.
So I'm glad Councilor Wreck brought this up, what is the breaking of this? Do we know what, I mean, we've got security, t-shirts, tents, photographers, cakes.
We have a budget, we work in a budget.
We do, we don't, you know, we don't, where we're at.
Yes.
And where is that?
We anticipate, we have $10,000, and I anticipate we're spending $8,000 right now.
So, so if, as far as the shorts, y'all going to sell them at a cost, or do you want to have any type of markup?
Markup.
Okay, how much markup would you, would you need?
I think 15 dollars is reasonable for sure.
Okay, so if you had the first shirt, if we went to Tillamook, so the first small for extra large is 843, so what would you want to sell it, like a $10 to make it even?
I would say 15 dollars for the shirts and maybe a little less for the children.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe 10 for kids.
15 for adults and 10 for children.
And how about the extra large, maybe like? Okay, all right. And so then we have yard signs. So once again, we have three different. So, once again, we have three different, we have three different prices for yard signs. We have Vista Print which is like a national firm, they have an office in Portland and also in Eugene. They are, and it's for the same exact thing, or stands, like eighteen by twenty four stands, signs with stands. So, Vista Print's coming at two sixty-five, fifty-five, and this is for twenty signs. You have Newport signs, which is coming in the same thing for five hundred and seventy dollars, and that's in Newport. And then you have Dot Print out of Los Angeles for the same thing, for a hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents.
So, when we go with Dot Print?
So, if we went with Dot Print, it would be, it would be, they're going to charge one sixty-eighty and that would include shipping.
Okay, so say that.
That's good.
Good order.
Alright.
Can I, can I start with a quick question?
Sure.
So, when you're talking about people coming up and it being kind of like an open mic, I was thinking Kathy is the one in charge of the mic, right? The whole time the mic is being used, Kathy, Mayor Short is the one that has a mic, right?
I, I think, well, Brady mentioned having like a roving mic, if anyone could go to the stage to talk and someone wants to talk about their...
So, if they come up to the stage, they are handed the mic by Kathy and they hand it back to Kathy? I guess my, my train of thought is I want to make sure that that mic is at all times, either with Kathy or somebody else, yes.
It'd probably be Kathy myself, because I'm going to be running the system.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. And so, then Brady, I think Kim, you were in here. Brady was talking about the pictures that we do have. He had one that was wonderful, but what she's...
Yeah, Chief, Chief Devo's.
His wife?
Yeah, on the rocks, I don't have that.
You don't have that one? But could you, could you tell the story just briefly about your...
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, in the seventies and eighties, he used to have a tent. And this is the grandson, yeah. And the tent was about where, it would used to be Holiday Surf at the time, right? Yeah, so Holiday Surf was kind of about where the pool is at Walmart. And there was a teepee there and we would, we would talk and tell stories and sell trinkets and things like that. But very informative. Yeah, just play the flute, yeah. And so, that photo is of his bed, that is on the rocks, taken, I believe in the thirties, late thirties, early forties. But it was colored in, it's a really nice photo, it's in full regalia, it's a great photo. And William refers to it as his grandpa. So, William's the one that's going to be here for us. And he's got the full regalia, it's, I've faced, some of it is in the same photo that was taken in the thirties, the head dress. Very interesting stuff, Kim's going to grab it. It, it was a photo that was... And on the rocks, about where Titleway is at the time.
Is it?
Yeah. And then you can see North Point, the tip of North Point in the background there.
Thank you, Brady.
Another interesting thing, he used to also come to Bayside Chapel when I was a student there in the eighties and nineties and give music lessons, historical lessons. I did try to find a picture of that.
We also need that written down, your...
That's great.
So, that's all my evidence going together.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I'm just happy that it's kind of gathered, you know?
Who's the photographer?
Uh, Kim.
Um, his name is Max Rayt and he takes very good and very reasonably priced pictures. He's a friend of mine, so I asked him to come do it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, depending on what the uses of the photos are, we can't take pictures of people or we can take pictures, but we can't just reproduce them without their permission, especially with children. So, I'm not sure what the purpose of these photos are, like having it, but we'd need a release from every person whose picture we might use.
Um, our photographer doesn't take pictures of children because of the, you know, posting them online, but people take pictures of other people at events all the time. So, we, he doesn't need a release for that. He took all of the pictures of the three years we did the Nelsberg Celebration and we use those pictures to promote the celebration. So, but he doesn't like to take pictures of children because he has children, so.
I would like to check that. I would like if there's a way of making sure, does he, does he know that for sure? I thought there is an issue of using people's images without...
You can't sell them, you can't take those images, on some of those images and sell them, I think, but I'll have him check.
Yeah, so what is our purpose of having, is it internal use? What are, what is our purpose of having them?
Um, like all the other pictures we have, to, to document our event, right? To document our fiftieth celebration through pictures, like we documented the history of Devo Bay through pictures. Another event, fun thing to say, this is what Devo Bay is all about, we have, we celebrate.
Kim, do they have, take pictures of the salmon bait?
Um, they do have people that took pictures of the salmon bait for the chamber and posted those pictures, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can we get a price on that, please?
It's three fifty, but if that's too much, I'm willing to donate that because I can get some good things. And I know these pictures are amazing, although I know we also have other talented folks, even at the table who, who has taken amazing pictures.
Okay, so that's all I have, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, we're moving along here, fantastic. Um, we have someone that wants to serve on our salmon enhancement commission. Kim, do you want to come on up and join us?
Hopefully, I can make it.
Kim, did we have a, no, Kim, did we have a ballot sheet?
Oh, did she not? We can find it. Yeah, I, I apologize, an extra paper, I don't know. I'll yell at her. Okay, here. She's, she's online, she went loose. Yes, she's, she's online, she went loose.
Oh.
Okay, Kim, you're not even a resident of Devo Bay and you want to help us with our salmon, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. And...
I'm less than ten miles away, so I kind of an honorary, not any equal David at Lincoln County.
Okay, that's good enough. Good enough for us. Any questions for Kim about his application?
What is it to ask me?
Laura, help me.
What's your experience, and you said seventy years of experience with ocean fisheries?
Say again?
Excuse me, you said seventy years of experience with ocean fisheries, is that a fisherman?
Well, I'm a sports fisherman and the most fish are pretty safe with me. But I like to be out there and I just like to be out, I'm a person that can't sit down, so.
Thank you for coming forward, we appreciate you, you volunteering.
And that's some very nice people, the Canadian and everybody I've helped.
We're really a lot of nice people on our... And you're going to be part of them, thank you. So, I think we've got our ballots, can you cross this?
That's very good.
Okay.
Should I sit down here or do that?
You, you know, you're basically telling me how to answer. You know, it was easy.
Yeah, it was.
Appreciate your coming.
Well, if I sit down too long, I just got a balance.
Gotcha. You guys do this well. Oh, I see what you did. We've got seven, I'll ask you now, is there a motion to accept the ballots?
I want to make a motion.
Is there a second? So, moved a second to accept the ballots, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you in July with Ben Kupi. Um, under new business, well, actually, this is kind of continuing business. Has everyone read the notice from Kim about the Kim Fisher Pier LLC? Pardon me, Mayor, did you want to do the new agenda item first? Oh, I can do that, sure. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Alright, um, John, do you want to come on up then?
Sure. I can't talk simultaneously.
That's okay, no problem.
Alright.
So, every year you do your little service, Easter Sunday?
Yeah, every year we have our, our Easter sunrise service at sunrise.
Right.
Over by the whale statue, and I apologize, I, it didn't hit me until this last Sunday when I was telling everybody, hey, don't forget, we're meeting at the whale statue at six forty-five, and I went, I forgot to fill out the paperwork. So, I called yesterday, filled out paperwork, and I'm here.
Thank you, any questions for John? Do we need a motion on this, Kim? Uh, to approve the...
Yes.
Okay, so, basically, it's just a motion to approve the sunrise service.
I move to approve the Bayside Chapel use of the city facility.
So, any discussion on the motion to approve the Bayside Chapel use of the whale park? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, John.
Perfect, and you're all in the board?
Okay.
Six forty-five.
Alrighty, now back to the top of the list here. Okay, so... At the meeting I missed two weeks ago, you all approved a business license for the Kim Fisher Pier, but we did not specifically denote the OLCC application. But she has not listed it with OLCC. So, we need to...
Would you like me to?
Yes, please, Kim.
So, essentially, what happened is I spoke in the conversation, I spoke to our city attorney and he said that it would have actually been better had we gave a decision on the OLCC that night, because we do have a timeline. So, the rules are that we have to provide a regulation or we, or we don't. We simply say, don't say anything, it will get approved without a sound statement. But the OLCC, you know, was city input, there are reasons we can deny it. And so, basically, I, she didn't officially withdraw it. I know that she said several times, or maybe she was, but she would have had to go to the OLCC to withdraw it. So, so we have to take action on it, we have to do it by Thursday, I think is when the forty-five days are...
Well, Mayor, in order to move this up for discussion, I would make a motion that we accept, approve the municipal end of the OLCC application for Kim Fisher Pier.
Alrighty.
Sounds like a Glen Eden Beach sewer meeting here.
Is there a second to the motion to accept the application as presented? Okay, no, there being no second, the motion has failed. So, is there another motion? We need to make some action on this. If we take no action, it will just get approved.
Yeah, well, what?
Just get approved. I'm doing a motion that it be denied. Is there a second to the motion to deny the application?
I'll start it.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the application as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, well, first of all, I haven't heard why we're denying it, I'd be interested in that because the OLCC gives us a, a list of things that we can deny on and I haven't heard any of those that we've met that bar. Why are we, why would we deny these people an OLCC license? We've approved their, their business license, they're set to go.
Well, I'm looking at the grant for refusal to issue a license if the applicant has made false statements to the commission. I'm a little bit disturbed about being told something repeatedly and then, yeah, it was wrong.
Can you be more specific?
Yeah, they told us repeatedly that they had withdrawn the application and they had not.
That's not how I recall it, that was a very interesting discussion. And as I look back on it, I felt that the city council was bringing undue pressure on that, that applicant. I don't think it was, you know, in our purview to do that, to make a deal with her. I think she was, you know, so desperate to get a business license to be able just to sell bottled water and warm clothing, that it evolved into that and not the OLCC permit. I, I think, I think that you could have read that either way, councillor. And I don't think it was an abject denial. On part of the applicant.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, I have to say no, I'm listening to you. But the motion carries. Um, okay, we've got the Neighbors for Kids Easter egg hunt. And Toby's not here, but they got the application and they do it every year on Saturday. Is there a motion to accept the application to use the park on Saturday for the Neighbors for Kids, moved to approve this up there? It's been moved and seconded to accept the Neighbors for Kids application. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Um, we all had a bid from Road and Joe Bike Way Company for some paving that we need to get done. And Brady, do you have to...
Sure, that was in the budget, these are overlays on some of the forest roads that are identified. They're kind of intersecting streets, Hawkins is probably the worst. It's across the highway just north of the audio one-on-one and it goes from Coast Avenue to Highway one-one. The utilities have been upgraded, the sewer was slip lined and the water line is a sewage that runs through there, but it was upgraded around 2015. So, an overlay would be in need so that that was identified as a street. The other, the other street was Sallett, which is on North Point, that crosses from where we paved Vista and then we also paved Sunset, so it's a crossing street filled with... So it's a crossing street filled with potholes. We spend a lot of money on pothole repair, that if we overlaid it, we'd probably save on that. Although the line needs to be upgraded, the water main, the sewer line is in great shape, but the water line eventually not affecting the overlay, it would be in an area that the driveway is wide enough to put a new water line in without tearing up the new asphalt. So we identified Celeste, and then the third one is probably a thin overlay, it's not, it's at least, that's at his Kent Street. Because there's not a lot of work on Kent, it would just be an overlay, but it does give a lot of potholes and a lot of high-traffic use.
Okay. Yes, I have a question. So this was higher than $10,000. Did we get free bids?
There's no other, it's Road and Driveaway. There's no other asphalt company.
There's no one else.
He's got Oklahoma and his county.
Yeah.
He's the only one. You can get other people that buy from him, and you still would pay the same price, or more, you pay more, yeah.
So do we have a way that we accept sole source?
Yes. Yes, it's not necessarily sole source, it's more like, I mean, I know it sounds like sole source, but it's not, because there's special rules around sole source, but it is like, this is, this is what we have, is this what we have.
Yeah, we talked through this before with the PT and stuff.
That first one, I just wanted to know.
But yeah, it is quite high, but it's worth the cost of.
And it was budgeted, not these exact streets, but the amount. Is there a motion to accept the bid as presented?
I move to accept the bid from Road and Driveaway.
One second.
Overlay on Kent Hawkins and Celeste.
Alrighty. It's been moved and seconded to go forward with the bid from Road and Driveaway Company. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We have a report from the planning commission. Is there any discussion on this? And Kit is available, our city planner is available, if anybody wants to ask any questions about, about in addition to the other items that were provided. Alrighty.
Oh, yes, I second that.
I really appreciate this report from the planning commission, and they're prioritizing the top five recommendations to update in our comprehensive plan. And I was wondering where we can go with that, what's the next step that we can take?
Probably contacting with the DL, the Department.
Yes, you can.
DLCD, always get the acronym wrong, to find out what type of technical assistance they can provide us. They do have some that they provide, I listened to a workshop through them the other day, but it might mean also getting a grant to get some of these things through. And which is also provided through, yes.
Can we get that on the list for the grant?
I was wondering how the, this would be a question for Kit, how the planning commission came up with their recommendations? If goal five for natural resources was discussed as a need and then fell off this list?
This is Kit. I recall, I think that at least one or one member of the commission mentioned natural resources, but I'd have to look at my notes to see specifically, but these seem to be to me, looking at the discussion afterwards, the five priorities that kind of rose to the top.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Well, I'd like to say a few more words.
Check it.
So to give the protection of our natural resources is key as, as the community develop, and our natural resource inventory is sort of minimal. Minimum that we were required to do to identify significant natural resources, for example. But I think we have a lot of natural resources that we, if we took another look at it in today's eyes versus four years ago, whenever that was, 1980, we'd see the world through a lot different focus. And so I would suggest that my priority would be to drop goal nine and to insert goal five.
So just, just have to go back to the planning commission? Do you recognize to make that call?
I would also put that, we have talked about a tree ordinance on the paths, does that mean we would put the natural resources there, or is that?
We're going to do that under the municipal code.
Okay.
And yes, it's definitely on my list. We, we've had a couple people express interest in addressing that. There is also something in the Land Use Code, that's more related to specific development. I think you're looking for something that is more specific to residential and, and other, so it's kind of a different. Oh, yes, Judy. When we had our, could you come to the table? When we had our joint working session, I was under the impression, I think the rest of the planning commission was under the impression that we had your approval to proceed on what we refer to as quality of life amendments or additions to the municipal code, and such things as charging stations for electric vehicles, the tree ordinance, and things of that nature. Something that we were going to work on, is we had time available, and then sort of bring it to you as, in one best swoop, as opposed to piecemeal, so that there would be savings in terms of the, the number of mailings that we would have to make to defocus residents, to let them know about the changes that were planned. But that, those were all things that we're planning to work on as we have time available, assuming that we still have your approval to proceed on that.
Thanks.
And, and we wanted to do it with, with the code generally, as opposed to new things that we're working on, like the townhouse graduation will be coming to you soon, because we think it applies to everything, as opposed to just, you know, new ordinances that we present to you.
Thank you.
But that's okay. Okay.
So, yes, I really appreciate that, and I, I think you heard that and agree with that.
I'm talking about the comprehensive plan update, though, which is different from in goal five within the comprehensive plan, it's different from these quality of life issues, they're related, but different. And so I, I still stand by my recommendations to drop goal nine from our priority and add goal five.
Is there one in concourse with that?
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's concurring with that.
Well, mayor, I would like to say this, on behalf of this planning commission, is that we should, I think we should follow their example. They, they got together, they met, they considered this at Great Lake, they worked on it. And I don't disagree with councillor Rec one bit, or anybody else on here. Maybe what we should do is add that on to this, and, and, and ask them to bear with us, we think it's so important, we should add it on, but they put a lot of time in on this, and just for us to pull the rug out from under, I think that's a really good idea.
I'm okay with adding, adding it on. I, I like that idea also, just add it on.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Judy?
You asked us to make a recommendation, and you can do with it as you will, we just appreciate your input.
We're gonna have to it for the house then, alrighty, sounds good. Okay, we'll just add number five, goal five to that, and do some research from the deal.
Okay, I'm going forward, scheduling a work session in April. I really need one. I need to go over some things with you and get some ideas of what your path forward is on some things that have recently or that's come up over the past few months, so that I know which direction to take on some of these things, like, for example, updating the code of ordinances for load enforcement, and how we want to do that, especially now that we have a deputy on board. And a couple other things that have been asked for discussion, and I would really like to have one in April. I'm hoping if everybody is okay with it. April's kind of busy. I wanted to do it on the 11th, but the 11th is out, because the D.C. Bay Fire District with their work getting done at their fire station, their station, they, they use our facility. So that's a Tuesday, but I don't know what other days of the week that would work for you.
What couldn't we do at community hall?
Because we don't have the Zoom capability there, there's no internet, so it would be, but that's not a bad idea, it'd just be really hard to work with.
We can set up that thing.
We can. Have you?
Yes.
Okay, so we couldn't Zoom it. Well, could we Zoom it, Brady?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind that. I have to look at, let me go, let me go get the community hall calendar, because that's kind of full too.
We had before, we had Zoom.
We had, we used this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, we had to use the phone, right, we don't have internet there.
Throw on that flag.
It's just even the Zoom.
It's just a work session.
We could use the 11th as something in the community.
We ended up having to use the internet phone. Or, or the the regular broadband phone, that's right, we don't have internet at home.
I didn't think we do, but we have my phone, I can use my laptop.
Yeah, so we can hotspot it, yeah.
What's that? So, Kim, are you talking about the 11th?
The 11th, it's just the other Tuesday, it's whatever time works for you, I mean, I'm
I can't do it in the morning, but I can in the afternoon.
Well, I think some people can't do it, except in the evenings, so just let me know what you can do. We can do it at 4:30, great, if you can do it at 5, great, if you can.
When is up to?
I can't do 4:30, I need 5.
Oh. 5?
Yep.
Everybody have your 5? That sounds like a great idea.
Date, please.
Oh, May, uh, May, 2nd, giving it.
8:00.
Probably, isn't that not? It really depends on how fast and how will I present things and what you decide to do.
April 11th, 5:00 PM.
Uh, April 11th at 5:00 PM at the community hall.
So you've had certain things on the workshop already in mind?
Uh huh.
Is it, and can there be other items added at the workshop?
Absolute time.
Does it have to be agendized, or?
We'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and say, open this, you know, open up a discussion of items. That way, people want to kind of hear what other, you know, or we can say councillor, councillor ideas.
Well, you know, mayor, I would be in favor of tightening that up a little bit, if, because if we do a free-for-all of ideas, we're not going to get anything done. And as you know, I've talked to you about issues that concern me. I brought one up tonight on this municipal court. I'd like to see if we can't get these on there, maybe you and American kind of approve or whittle down, and, and make it tight and make it effective.
The council would be more than welcome to send me their ideas, the things they would like to discuss ahead of time. Then we could just always leave things if you want to do, but yeah, that would, that would work.
One thing.
I don't have a huge list, I have probably about six items, that's plenty.
That's plenty.
And most of, I think several of them will go through pretty fast.
Could you, could you send us the six items?
I, I will send you everything, everything, you bet.
Alrighty, we've got that category.
Thank you, very much. I hated to ask you for another meeting.
I was looking, looking ahead at our council meetings, and I found that July 4th is on Tuesday in this year, so that we need to reschedule the July 4th. And I was looking at possibly just moving it to the next Tuesday, July 1.
July 1.
Does that work with everyone's schedule?
Yes.
So then we have July 11th and then the following meeting?
Yeah, you know, I have two in a row, but
Okay.
I, I, we can do it.
We can do it.
Good. Okay. Project updates. Anyone have a chance to read through all of what's going on in town here? Did you have any questions for Kim or Brady?
I have a question.
Yeah.
And maybe I missed it, but on the the, on the, the core reviewing the harbor plans, that the core is concerned about the seawall. I hadn't seen that before this report.
It just came up.
Okay.
And it might actually be resolved by now, because I got a recent report, I've been following up with John, so what they've been concerned about is us attaching anything to the seawall, and this particular, they addressed the pier, the docks. This particular thing that they were talking about was the pedestals, the lettering, how they're going to do that. So John, our engineer and Campbell Environmental, met with the representative from the core on Friday. I did get an update from them that they believe they have a plan forward, and everything's going to go fine, they were able to redesign it and move things off. Do you have the redesign? I will send it to you if you'd like to see what they did, but they just basically made sure that there isn't the impact of the seawall that the core was worried about.
Great.
Their, their main concern is if they have to get in an emergency situation and do replacement, repair, or totally replace the seawall in certain sections, that they're able to do that without a lot of stuff attached to it, and if main gangways are attached, so the way they have a setup, there's going to be pipelines that are holding the gangway, and nothing that would attach to the wall, some of the pedestals will be easily removed, and that's what I'm on the CD.
So I, after hearing from the engineer, and he's told me, because I asked for an update, and he said, yeah, he said that we had a good conversation, we got a new design, we think it's going to there, it's going to be fine, and the Department of State Lands did approve the permits then, so.
Okay. And it looks like that I didn't get them. Oh, this is the old one. I sent him, we sent an updated version. The other, was there any depression? I had two small updates to this, okay. Have you looked at the property under the board?
Yeah, it's clear.
Right, looks good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had talked, and I want to make sure that you're okay with this, we talked about those concrete barriers, they really want to do the logs. I have to follow up with them to find out if, if they're going to use the logs that they cut down, if they're actually going to roll them down.
They have placed the logs.
They have, what did they do?
They placed the logs that were there.
They're cut down, I haven't looked at it, so.
It's just two.
Are, have you guys looked at that? Are you okay with the way they did it? Okay.
You'll, you'll see where the driveway going in, they just set two older logs there, just so people can drive in.
Okay, I did ask them about the fence that everybody, Dan and I wrote in on why they would do that. Well, we don't need to talk, I, I finally got to speak to the auditor today.
That's great.
Um, we talked about, he's going to close up 1920, so we'll have that complete. He's going to be here the week of May 8th to start, I'm going to start working on 1920 stuff, or 2020, we sent him the stuff we've already put together, I know, I'm like so focused on that one, and then he's going to be out the week of May 8th to start to do the 2021. So, yeah, so, so we finally have some movement there.
Thank you.
Great meetings with the, the crew for the budget, I'm kind of looking forward to presenting things to you, they, there's a lot of passion, enthusiasm, and, you know, just the way they address things is just really, so you know, the logs, I think there's one more thing outside, was it? I think that, maybe that was it. Yeah, I think that was it.
I'm astonished by the amount of work, mayor, what's going on here.
Very incredible.
We want to come and have our staff and, and advise my fellow councillors, we've got to be very careful about what we put on the shoulders of these folks, because they are very busy moving us forward.
I was very happy to have two of my operators get certified in that grade.
Yes, I noticed that.
Yes.
And they're
That's big.
They're both going for their next level.
Yeah, because we may have a level three plant when we get our next discharge permit. We're not sure, we're still doing engineering on that.
Any other questions?
I forgot to tell you, though, I heard from the county administrator yesterday, so maybe that $10,000, I told you that he'd been promising, it will be here next week.
So, the $10,000 for the audit support, I said I have that CPA.
I mentioned that in the last project updates.
Yeah. We're, we're having emergency preparedness meeting that on Monday at 4:30, and we're going to be going over things that we want to suggest for purchase for our committee. I don't know what your schedule is, would you be able to?
Yeah, I'll be here Monday, I'm just talking to you here on the 11th, I have to go.
This will be the 10th.
Yeah, but I'll be back for the Yeah, but I'll be back for the meeting at.
Okay. That'd be great to add, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm here. We're going to do it here in the council. Okay.
I was just remembering that the MOU between us and the county having to do with the vehicles, have we decided like how internally we're deciding how to use that money? Or is that something we can get onto the GIPDA?
We should probably get that on agenda and discuss.
All righty. Any other discussion? We had a notice of appeal and the hearing date. Did everyone adjust to read that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that for Kit? And then there was a follow-up regarding the Lupa fee rate fund.
Mayor, may I comment on this?
Sure.
Thank you. I have some concerns about this. Basically, it has to do with council authority or city councilor authority to to get legal opinions and to initiate policies. And that's, that's what's troubling me about this. And from the very beginning, I felt that we were kind of singling somebody out for special treatment in the sense that in my history with DPO Bay, which goes back almost 30 years, I don't ever recall the city going after somebody to get money off of an appeal, a lost appeal. And it concerns me on a couple of levels. One is that the appeal is really the only thing that the little guy has to fight what they perceive wrong. Developers have deep pockets. And this shields the idea of making appeals. And, and, and we shouldn't single out anybody. In this case, it was Mr. Grant. This is the second time that I can recall in the last year that we've gone after somebody who served the city honorably to reclaim fees that we are not entitled to have. And so I would like to ask Kit a question on this. Kit, who authorized you to contact the city attorney and build this case against Mr. Grant?
It was motioned last time in our minutes.
I'm referring to, let's go back to.
There was a motion there last time to go after.
On March 21st, Fran. On March 21st, we were given a memo where it says a councilman suggested that the city pursue recoverable costs from the petitioner. This was before we had made a motion. That you, that somebody, that a councillor had gone down without any authority from this council to initiate this policy of recovering costs from somebody. Now, we're a deliberative body. Before a councillor, you know, does anything like that, I think it should come before the city council where we can debate it. You know, if we're, and then move forward if that's the case. And that, that makes me wonder, what is the authority of a city councillor? What is the authority of our planner to initiate legal calls? Who can call the lawyer? Isn't that something that the city council authorizes? Let me ask that question to anybody who's willing to answer it.
Actually, we have some.
Because this is Kit. I mean, I can say that it's my understanding that as the city planner, I have the authority to contact the city office when I have questions that I believe require their input.
As well as the city reporter.
Let me ask you another question, Kit. Is the same fee collected on all appeals? Including those that you have processed? You said that according to, according to your memo here, that the appellant filed a $1,725 deposit. Is that, and a $276 fee, $2,001 in total? Is everybody, in your experience, done the same thing on any appeals that you have processed prior to this, prior to this one?
Councillor Beasley is the only appeal that has been processed in the year that I've worked for the city. But it's my understanding that this is the same fee that's been in place for a couple of years now. And that it's the same fee that has been charged to other appellants in previous cases. Thank you.
All righty.
I want to tell you, Mr. Fox has been here a year as of today.
Yes.
I think you're delighted.
Yes, absolutely. Great addition. Okay, are there any closing public comments this meeting? All righty, are there council comments?
Yes, Fran.
So I just, I was at a solid list advisory committee meeting just sort of on behalf of DPO Bay. And I found out there's a free compost giveaway April 22nd at all transfer stations in the county. So if you want compost, April 22nd, either at the North Lincoln or at the Newport or in Galveston, Toledo. And then I also found out that on July 29th, there's a hazardous waste collection day. That rotates around the county. In this year, it's going to be at the Walcourt Transfer Station, Hazardous Waste Collection Day. Thank you. And did you want to remind everyone that Earth Day, 22nd, is our citywide cleanup?
You're doing good.
And we've got fires out and we'll be going around the neighborhoods seeking volunteers as well, so. This is for the city property, right?
Yeah.
From the city park, city parks and.
Harbor and downtown.
Yeah. Great.
So a question on this, who's coordinating with what, who does what?
Fran.
No, I'm actually not. I was tasked with putting up the stuff on the SOL website and Kim made the flyer. So.
Into the my 350 dollars?
Yeah, but in terms of coordinating other things, I haven't taken that on.
I can figure that out at 8:30, a half hour beforehand and tell God who's going to do what.
Yeah.
Where we're going to.
You mean here.
Okay. The only thing we haven't, needs coordination ahead of time is if we're going to have coffee and donuts.
I said I will be here now.
Okay.
Oh, and also the volunteer waiver, insurance waiver.
Right, yeah.
I can respect that. Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
And you said, and you said that you had a friend that was going to be in charge of donating the plants?
Plants?
Plants or flowers?
I was wondering where would I get those native plants from? Because I don't think we, we didn't purchase any, right? Okay, you don't have.
No, I thought you had a friend who said that was in charge that was going to bring you flowers to plant.
Okay, well, we don't have.
We might not have any.
We want flowers and flowers.
I think you said I used to donate myself.
Autumn, did you have any comments?
Uh, no.
Choice?
No.
And I asked around if anybody had anything they wanted me to bring forward and there were several people that suggested that we pursue getting Uber in town. Not just for rides home when you need a ride home, but also to fetch groceries and stuff for folks that can't get out. So I'm going to bring that up.
All righty.
Good, thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to wish you after your birthday, Happy Easter. Well, that out there on Friday, maybe just not raining too hard, we're cleaning up the poop, coffee parks.
You didn't work Friday like honey? Like during the day?
In the afternoon.
At, oh, okay.
Yeah, well, we're going to put up the garbage cans and stuff that volunteers can help. We've got extra shelves.
Okay, I think we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Now we have a good time to get a few photos taken.
Sure, sure.
So we get our deputies up there with Google Windows that like to see part of the photo. Have it right there.